Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, January 11, 2021. To call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Under recognition of members present, let their record reflect that all the councilors are present, including the city administrator. And with that, we are at item three of the agenda. I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is always as behind city administrator Keanrath in the city administrator's office. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. There is nothing to report under general this week at this point under section five. Is there any committee correspondence to council? Seeing no committee correspondence to council, moving on to item six, public comment. City Administrator Keanrath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, two pieces of public comment. I'll read into the record.
Thank you.
The first comes to us from John and Linda Fenderson. Dear Mayor, City of Saco Planning Board and City Council, we are older mom and pop farmers at 97 New County Road in Saco Maine. Farming is mostly all my husband has ever done. I joined him as his wife over 20 years ago. John has run a vegetable stand along before I came on board and before and during that time, his father ran dairy and then cow breeding farm. This property has been farming forever. We plan to run this farm as long as we could, perhaps expanding with community members. We enjoy gardening, but we also are realistic and realize that we need the land to work as we got older. So when we got control of the land, we tried to find a way to keep the farmland intact with supplemental income that would be good for all. Therefore, a solar farm was sought after to be tucked away in the backfields that were either hard to use or unused. The problem, and I brought this up at a Saco public meeting on 11/4/19, just before the pandemic, is that we are afraid that we are going to be put in a zone with a higher tax bracket and a zone that prevents us from farming our farming business, which are allowed on the current zoning, but not on the one you want to pass on Monday, 1/11/2021. This zone change will ruin us and cost a big loss to the solar company we leased with in good faith. They've eaten all the costs for all the permits, testing, lawyers, et cetera. And the last step is the paperwork from the city of Saco. Now, at a public meeting before the pandemic, I was assured by Mayor Lovell that open farmland was important. I'm too trusting, I guess, because you and the city of Saco are going against our interests and planning to put our land into West Residential. The planning board has denied the paperwork from Blue Wave Solar TRC, who are working on our behalf. The city council plans to push the zoning through without addressing our concerns. This zone change may even prevent us, Fenderson Farm, from getting our business license and growing and selling our vegetables. I don't know. A good question is why won't you address our concerns before pushing this through? Sincerely, John and Linda Fenderson. The second one comes to us from Joshua Waterhouse, JW Group LLC, 506 Berry Road, Saco Maine. Dear City Council, I am writing reference to the property we own located at 372 Main Street. Its current use since 1970s has been as a five-unit residential structure accompanied by a large doctor's office in part of the building. In reviewing the proposed dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance changes to be adopted, I think will be appropriate to include this property in the high-density district or HDR. Currently, the proposed use will be included in the MDR district, limiting the number of residential units the building could have. I have included a copy of the proposed zones with the property in question highlighted. In October of 2019, the planning board stated they would include this property in the HDR zone during public hearing. Staff has been a proponent of including it in the HDR zone. We have also met with the Historic Preservation Committee, who was in approval to the improvements to the building and the rezoning of the property. I thought this process was complete and that the property would be included in the HDR zone, but it never was added and remains in the MDR zone. I again asked that the property be included in the high-density zone, based on the planning board stating the property was to be included. Staff encouraged and the Historic Preservation Committee. I have made extensive investment in the property towards this goal. The property is currently constructed based upon the HDR zone. I have included a site map and survey of the property and its current use. As shown, the property has existing parking to accommodate nine to 10-plus residential apartments or condos that would be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The lot size is .7 acres with approximately 7,500 square feet of potential living space in the current structure. I believe this property would be a benefit to the city and its goals moving forward, being that it is in the downtown district on Main Street. This would be a perfect example of a property that would adopt some of the goals listed in the comprehensive plan. The main emphasis would be discouraging sprawl by encouraging residential development at greater densities in the downtown. This property would allow downtown-focused housing options, consistent with goals of the city, to have affordable properties with parking within walking distances of the downtown. It would also incorporate reconstruction of an existing property in the third level while upgrading all mechanicals in the property, including fire alarm and suppression systems. Including 372 Main Street in the HDR zone would encompass the goals set forth in the comprehensive plan established in 2018 by increasing the density of residential units in existing buildings, allowing for parking downtown, preventing development sprawl, revitalizing an existing building in need of upgrades, turn underutilized upper-building stores into apartments, and create affordable housing local to walking and downtown area. I hope my request for including 372 Main Street in the HDR district is included, and we can revitalize this property into a beautiful property for Main Street and the city of Saco to enjoy. Sincerely, Joshua Waterhouse, JW Group LLC. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Keanrath, at this moment in time, if there's anybody from the public who would like to speak, please go ahead and use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine if you're using a cellular phone, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. We ask that you state your name, your address, and when you give your comments to the council, you will have three minutes. So again, raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine. First up, we have Kelly Archer. Kelly, you haven't been allowed to speak. Please go ahead and unmute and present your comments to the city council. Kelly, we cannot hear you if you're trying to unmute here. Okay, maybe we'll maybe we'll come back to Kelly. We'll move on to the next person is identified as Phil Hatch on the attendee list. You've been allowed to speak. Please go ahead and unmute and provide your comments to the council. Please start with your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Do you hear me okay?
We can hear you okay.
All right. Thank you. My name is Phil Hatch. I reside at 19 Evergreen Drive in Saco. Mayor and council members, the events of this past week regarding the approval of the zoning ordinances submitted to you by the planning board have shown me a darker side of municipal politics. I know not all of you are complicit, and I do believe that some of you have not been fully informed of the facts. Although I have been deeply involved in the events over the last week in support of tonight's vote, getting to this point has not been a very pleasant experience for me. To those of us observing, the process has given us all reason to be deeply concerned about the state of our local governance. In my opinion, there seems to be a relentless effort on the part of some city officials to promote an ordinance change agenda that differs drastically from the one recommended by the planning board and supported by the citizens of Saco. A continuing overarching theme that the proposed ordinance is somehow not in harmony with the current comprehensive plan hangs over the process, stoking fears of possible litigation. To my knowledge, no one promoting this notion has publicly indicated what specific party they fear litigation from, and neighborhood legal counsel cannot seem to reason who in fact would have legal standing to put forth litigation on this issue. In my opinion, it has become a smokescreen. The city's opinion regarding harmony with the comprehensive plan has been rebutted by the neighbors and their legal counsel on a couple of occasions. We have provided a compelling case that the lack of harmony argument is likely flawed. I find it extremely ironic that the folks who have been trying to convince you that the zoning ordinance is not in harmony with the comprehensive plan also encouraged you last week to cast a vote that was not in harmony with the very ordinance you swore an oath to preserve and protect. I reminded you last week about the advice city attorney Murphy provided you just a few weeks ago. Honesty, transparency, due diligence, and integrity will serve you well as a mitigant to litigation. So in closing, tonight you have an opportunity to do what is fair, equitable, and frankly, what is right. I humbly request your approved tonight's suggested motion, accepting the ordinances as presented to you by the planning board. It is what your constituents want. Do not let anyone convince you that another alternative motion, including one that would send the ordinances back to the planning board, would serve Saco citizens better. That would be false and disrespectful to due process. It would also be a waste of taxpayer dollars. Remember, individuals of high integrity do what is right, especially when no one is looking. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Up next, we have a marker on the attendee list identified as Linda Fenderson. Linda, you've been allowed to speak. Please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and provide your comments to the city council.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I know this is Linda Fenderson from Fenderson Farm, right up on Route 5 in Saco, and you want to change my zoning from agricultural to residential, West Residential. I know that in your view, this plan going through tonight for the city of Saco is really important, and I understand, but I can't understand why the rush to pass it through without addressing the issues a lot of folks have put before you as well as us. If this goes through before the issues are resolved, there is little guarantee that our farm will remain a farm with our ability to control our future as a farm, or that other Saco residents' issues will be taken seriously. I was talking to someone from the Maine Department of Agriculture to see if they knew about our zone changing and what we could do about it. They got back to me, and I was told that they found out that in this West Residential Zone, you want to pass for our farm, we would be permitted to grow vegetables, but we will not be allowed to have farm animals. We plan to have farm animals, and what's a real farm without chickens and cows and goats and sheep and so forth, as well as the gardening aspect? It's supposed to work in a cycle, the manure from the animals enriches the soil, and the animals eat some of what they grow, and it's a circle. It's a cycle. My contact with the Maine Department of Agriculture, they didn't even know about the upcoming zone change to our farm until I brought it to their attention. My contact quoted a Maine Department of Agriculture application for municipal ordinance number 155, and this basically states that the city shall submit a copy of the proposed ordinance to the commissioner at least 90 days prior to the meeting of the legislative body or public hearing, at which adoption of the ordinance will be considered. I sure hope that my contact was mistaken about you not following protocol if you pass this tonight, because I don't know. I know that Saco doesn't need a lawsuit or fine from the state, and I really, when I when I spoke to her, I didn't mean to open a can of weeds, worms. I'm sorry if I did. It's just that this is the first year that we will have both the control to manage our farm and the time to try new things to build it up. And this really upsets us that the city is undermining our farm. We were here first. This farm was here for at least five generations, so before you sign this zone change, perhaps you could give us some reassurance, a guarantee in writing that our property will remain a farming agricultural zoning and that you will not interfere with our plans that will fall within that zone. Then we can be assured that we can, we will get the farming agricultural zone, contract zoning that you verbally suggested that you could or might give us. And then if nothing changes, you have nothing to worry about from the state. Am I right? I just feel like our world is falling down around us. A farm is important to our community. We served at least 350 low-income seniors a generous $50 worth of farm fresh vegetables this past season on our Maine Senior Farm Share Program. We served many more local residents. We are close enough to the city so they can get here without too much effort. Saco needs this farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Linda.
Up next is identified under attendees as Kelly Archer. Kelly, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Bear with us, folks, as we're having a little bit of technical difficulties here.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Kelly, we can hear you now.
I really appreciate your patience on this technology. Am I getting feedback?
You're getting some feedback, so you have two devices too close to each other, so you may want to turn one of them off.
Is, can Andrew take one of my Kelly Arches off?
Let's see if we can try that. I believe that's been done, Kelly.
Does this work better?
A little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am Kelly Archer of 185 Bradley Street, a sworn mayor-appointed and council-approved member of the ZOR's Zoning Ordinance Revision Steering Committee. As mentioned last Monday, it has been an honor to serve the city of Saco for 27 months and working with and beside the staff, consultants, attorneys, planning board members, and members of the public. After extensive public outreach, workshops, public meetings, and hearings, without hesitation, due process was fully vetted and performed on the document before you tonight. The culmination of the extensive work, dedication, and commitment with a unanimous positive agreement and recommendation from everyone involved presented this living document to you for your approval tonight at your second and final reading. I petition you to approve this document as is. In tonight's updated council packet and proposed suggested motion, I am now in agreement that due process is also being met by referring the amendments back to the planning board for a complete and vetted study, analysis, and review, public hearing notifications being met, with citizens being heard, and for the planning board's recommendation report, including these and other subsequent amendments returning to the city council, will satisfy the city ordinance of petition requirements. Thank you, each and every one of you, for performing due process and for your due diligence to be truly informed as you thoughtfully consider to repeal and replace the zoning ordinance revision packet as it stands tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other public comment? All right, seeing no hands raised, other comment moving on. We are now at, there are no minutes to approve this evening, so we are now at the item eight consent agenda items, and that is item A, Confirmation of Council Legals on Appointments to the Bitterford Saco Chamber of Commerce. That is the only consent agenda item. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved. Counselor Mintorn?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. That brings us to item nine, action items. We have item A, first reading of the updated dog ordinance, and that is Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. After growing concerns have been brought to the council and city staff regarding the city's dog ordinance policies, it was determined that updates were necessary regarding dogs being under voice control, running at large, and specifying areas where dogs should be restricted. Amendments to the dog ordinance include updated definitions, leash laws, and specifications of when and where a dog can be off leash. The amended dog ordinance restricts dogs from being in open sports fields and playing fields and lays out the locations of each field. It requires all dogs to be on a leash while on the beach from April 1st through September 30th. From October through March 31st, dogs can be on the beach without a leash. It is also required that all dogs be leashed on public land within the city of Saco, except for the dog park located on Saco Street and the beach from October 1st through March 31st. The updated dog ordinance gives council the ability to set fines for those not adhering to the ordinances, as well as late fees for owners who do not license their dogs by the set deadline. The city council hereby approves the first reading of the updated dog ordinance and further moves to schedule a public hearing date of February 1st, 2021.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Mintorn. Discussion, Counselor Berman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I've previously sent to you and the city administrator's office a few concerns I have, mostly about grammatical or typographical errors that in some cases, I think, confuse the intended meaning of the ordinance. As an example, under 642.9, leash, it currently reads the third line by an animal control officer and law enforcement officer, whereas I think the intent isn't that both must order the dog owner to have a leash, but either or would be acceptable. And so I think an or should replace an and. In that same section, the first part of the sentence defines a leash, whereas the second part talks about when they must be used. I think separating those sentences to make that clear would be helpful. There's a similar and/or problem in 643, at-large dogs. The way it's written, it's unclear if it should be leased at the city dog park and at the beach, or the beach. I think that should be an or also. Similarly, the way it's written, it makes it confusing whether those dates apply to only the beach or to the beach and the park. And so I think that should be clarified also. I've noted other, 646, Control of Animal Waste, the final sentence, the regulation should not apply to any person who by reason of rather than or physical handicap. There are several other sections where I think commas or spaces would be helped clarify, including 642.3, 642.2, 645, 646, and several other spots, 6411. There's a number of commas missing between the list of different parties involved. So I move that those amendments be made prior to the public hearing.
Counselor Berman, you can make that amendment. However, these are more grammatical errors, so you don't need an amendment if you just send that along, which you already have. City Administrator Keanrath will forward that off to Director Summer and staff, and they will address these grammatical issues before the next iteration.
Perfect. Then I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Any, any further discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Oh, thank you. I don't know if I had my hand up yet, but I guess you saw that I unmuted myself.
I saw you were reaching and unmuting, and I took a wild guess.
Yeah, I mean, I guess first I'd like to thank staff for taking the time to kind of make what we had on the books previously a little bit more defined. There are a few things that, similar to Counselor Berman, that mentioned that I guess I could just forward along to city staff. But there are a couple of things I just, the way I read this, it's not clear. So in 64.1 says the purpose of this ordinance is to require that all animals in the city of Saco always be kept under the control of their owner or keeper. Well, are we talking dogs or all animals? Does that mean I have to leash my cat? So that's, again, I don't think that's the intent. But I also had question in regards to service dogs, and I'm far from an expert in this area, but I don't know if there's instances where a service dog, in order to provide that service that it does, may not need or can't be on a leash. It also seems that like it conflicts with, with the language later on in the ordinance about hunting dogs, which are not required to be on a leash. hunting dogs, which are not required to be on a leash if they're being used for hunting. The 64-5, "Animal Noise," this really is just an overall question, but I don't really understand how that's enforced. It doesn't say, and then I have concern, I just think of my own dog, for example. If I'm not home and someone walks by the house, it's definitely on occasion, he'll bark. So am I looking at being fined if he's inside the house, or are we talking about specifically outside? I know some people leave the dogs outside, and, you know, they may bark for hours. Is that what we're looking for? Otherwise, it seems like it's rather open-ended, and that would be concerning to me. The other one, and I know this is, some of these things have been on or in the current ordinance, but I just was kind of perplexed by them. 64-8, apparently we regulate the number of dogs a person can own, which I don't really understand why that's an issue unless someone can explain to me why it's been an issue in the past.
It's for kennel licensing, Counselor Johnston. After so many dogs, you become a kennel, and you have to actually go for licensing and permitting as a former animal control officer. I know a little bit about that, but that was 20 years ago, and the laws, I'm sure, have changed since I did that. But it's required, I don't know if three's the number, or if it's still the number, I just know that that was probably why it was in there a long time ago, is to make sure that kennel licensing happens. So you don't have kennels that they find and these emaciated animals and issues that, you know, you do find in rural areas.
Right, so if I had four small little dogs, I'd have to get a kennel license? I guess, I don't know, I guess I was just looking for how that's determined, because I know people, for example, that have more than those three or four, and they just register them, a husband has two and the other spouse has the other two. Then we have the 64-10, "The Disposition of Dogs Which Have Bitten Persons," says that "it shall be unlawful for the owner or person keeping or harboring any dog when notified that such dog has bitten any persons." I was just curious, are we including trespassers? If someone comes onto my property and my dog bites them, is this, the rest of this section going to apply to my dog? And then 64.11, under "trespass," it says, "an owner of an animal." Again, it's the same thing, and it's throughout this section, we refer to it as an animal. And so, again, I have a concern, I have an outdoor cat, does that mean if my outdoor cat goes on my neighbor's property, you know, I'm going to be looking at potential fines or whatnot? I just, if we put the dog, you know, that cleans that up. And then, again, I know this is in the current ordinance, the 64.15 with rabies. I don't know if it's even, it currently says, "Upon positive diagnosis of rabies in any dog within the city, the mayor shall proclaim and invoke a citywide quarantine." I don't really know if the charter actually allows the mayor to have those powers. I would assume this probably dates back to quite some time ago, when the mayor was more of a strong mayor role. I mean, to me, it seems a bit extreme to say no dogs can go outside if one dog gets rabies, but that's my personal opinion. And I guess that's a, thank you.
Director Summer, do you want to respond to any of those issues? Or would you just like to make the corrections that have been identified and bring it forward in a presentation upon the public hearing or at the second and final?
I'll make the corrections, but what you see, again, when you see it in black, those ordinances that were on the books many years before, I left them on because I wasn't sure if we wanted to keep them on. I talked to the mayor, especially with the 64.15, that he had the power to put the dogs in quarantine citywide if there was a rabies issue, and I think he was quite surprised by that as well. You know, I'll make the changes, obviously, to update it to the dogs instead of the animal. You know, as we move forward, I'll take Council, Councilmember Berman's email from the city administrator, Ken Rath, to update that as well, and then kind of have a clean version for you guys the next time it comes on the table.
Thank you, Director Summer. Any questions, any further discussion? Counselor Berman?
At the next meeting, can we get feedback about both the number of dogs issue and the quarantine issue with rabies? I don't think we had resolution as to which direction those should go, but it'd be useful to understand the rationale of the limit to three dogs, and whether the mayor can enact a quarantine, or how that process would work.
There is something in the charter, Counselor Berman, that does give the mayor the ability to, under a public health section, does give the mayor the ability to do some public health actions, and I think this ordinance would comply with that, and I think that's why it was in the, it was in our city ordinance as well as the city charter. But the kennel issue, I can, you know, Director Summer might be able to answer that, or he might be able to get an answer for the next meeting.
What I'll do is I'll reach out to the animal control officer for the city of Saco locating, to see if he has the information. If not, I'll contact the state on it, to see what their requirements are.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see no hands raised, no counselors seeking recognition, a roll call vote on the dog ordinance. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone. We are now at item B, a final reading. Amendments to zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan review ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Beginning in October 2018, the city of Saco established a zoning ordinance revision committee that began working with city staff and consultants on a comprehensive zoning ordinance revision. After extensive public outreach, public meetings, work sessions, the new zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan, and subdivision ordinance were developed. The city council held a public hearing on these ordinances and the zoning map on November 4th, 2019. The city council voted to send the zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan, and subdivision ordinances back to the planning board for further review. Planning board and the zoning ordinance revision steering committee continued working toward, or together with city staff, to revise the zoning ordinance, zoning map, subdivision, and site plan ordinances. A public hearing was held on October 20th, 2020, and it was decided to continue the public hearing through December 1st, 2020, when the public hearing was then closed. Planning board voted unanimously after December 1st, 2020 meeting to approve the planning board report, submit that report to the city council, and voted unanimously to approve the zoning ordinance, site plan, and subdivision ordinance, and zone, and the zoning map, and send to the city council for their review. City council accepted the planning board report at their December 14th, 2020 meeting, held the first reading, and set the public hearing for January 4th, 2021. The public hearing was held on January 4th, 2021, and after closing, the public hearing in the council took action with the following motion, made and approved six one. I move to continue consideration of the repeal of the existing zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and zoning map, and the enactment of the zoning ordinance, site plan ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, and zoning map to the January 11th, 2021 council meeting, and to direct city staff and legal counsel to prepare and provide amendments to said ordinances and zoning map. To one, reinstate the R5 MU district to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as described in exhibit eight. Two, to reinstate master plan development in the Route 1 corridor to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as described in exhibit nine. And three, change LDR zone parcels to industrial to allow access to industrials on parcels as described in exhibit 10 for a final vote at the January 11th, 2021 council meeting. For easier reference to the amendments, in which sections of exhibits eight and nine that contain the amendments, please refer to and focus on only the pages with changes as listed. Page 10, adding R5 MU to table three dash one, conventional zoning districts. Page 12, dash 32, cut sheets, only corrective areas to correspond with table four dash one. Page 35 through 40, table three dash three, permitted and conditional uses, adding the R5 MU. Page 43, table four dash one, dimensional standards for all zoning districts, added the R5 MU. Page 48, adding R5 MU to elder and disability density bonus. Page 81, minor tax change for clarification. Page 82, minor change in addition to public hearings and notice requirements for master plan development in the R5 MU and PR districts. Page 85, addition of section G, additional standards for master plan development in the Portland Road District. Page 86, addition of section I, master plan developments in the Route 5 mixed use for our R5 MU district. Page 88 and 89, addition of approval criteria for site inventory and analysis, and master plan for the Portland Road District and the R5 MU District. Page I, the zoning map, updated to reflect the reinstatement of the R5 MU District and the extension of the industrial district off of Flag Pond Road. Upon further consultation with legal counsel, it was advised that city council refer the amendments back to the planning board for review, public hearing, report to the city council based upon section 230-1401B of the Saco Code of Ordinances. Staff recommends that the city council hold the second and final reading and approve only the zoning, site plan, and subdivision ordinances and zoning map December 2nd, 2020, as approved by the planning board. And staff further recommends that the amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map that the city council recommended at their January 4th, 2021 meeting, in exhibits eight and nine, be referred to the planning board for their report and public hearing. According to section 230-1401B of the Saco Code of Ordinances, the city council shall refer all proposed amendments, the zoning ordinance, to the planning board for a report thereon. Planning board shall hold a public hearing for consideration of the proposed amendments at least 10 days before the report is submitted to the city council. I move to repeal the existing zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and zoning map to replace these by the enactment of the zoning ordinance, site plan ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, and zoning map, all dated December 2nd, 2020, as recommended by the planning board and as first read in this council on December 14th, 2020, as in exhibits one, two, three, and four, and heard at public hearing on January 4th, 2021, without the proposed amendments to said ordinances and zoning map as described in exhibit seven, eight, and nine, to reinstate the R5 MU district to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, reinstate master plan development in the Route 1 corridor to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, and change the LDR zone parcels to industrial to allow access to the industrial zone parcels. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Discussion? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move to amend the motion to include and to establish the effective date of the new zoning ordinance, site plan ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, and zoning map to 90 days from enactment pursuant to city charter section 2.09c.
Motion to amend has been made by Counselor McPhail to extend enactment to 90 days in accordance with the charter. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second, or the amendment's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Purdy. Discussion on the amendment only. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I'm just looking to clarify, currently, it's, I believe, 45 days, and you're pushing it out to 90 days? Is that correct?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston, I think it's, these, this becomes effective 30 days after the enactment, and I believe that staff is, you know, in Counselor McPhail's motion is asking for 90 days.
Okay.
Any further discussion? On the amendment only? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Amendment passes seven zero. Back to the main motion. Discussion? Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everyone knows, I'm new to council, but even if I wasn't, I don't think I could be an expert in land use and the process of updating the zoning ordinance, which only occurs very periodically. It's been my goal in my short time dealing with this to really, to do what's right, and to follow our process, and make sure that we're doing this the right way. And so last week, when I received guidance from our city staff and legal counsel, that we needed to make amendments to the zoning ordinance in order to make it consistent with our comprehensive plan, I felt compelled to do so and make the motion and ultimately vote for that. Over what we heard was the fears and objections of many neighbors. I thought it was unfortunate that the planning board would send us an ordinance that our staff and legal counsel thought was inconsistent with our comprehensive plan, and didn't view an alternative. Now, as I understand it, we'd have to send those amendments back to the planning board to be consistent with city code. And so perhaps that now is the right thing to do. I do worry that the process caused a lot of confusion, and probably caused some of the neighbors to feel unheard, as we heard in the public comment period earlier, and I regret that. And so I also want to take this moment to just acknowledge that there were a number of issues that came out during the public comment period that I think are worthy of additional consideration, and I hope as we consider these three amendments that we're proposing to send now, these other issues don't get lost. We've heard several times from Linda Fenderson and the Fenderson Farm, who are requesting to be, remain in a rural zone, or to be rezoned as rural if we pass tonight's amendment. We heard a lot about sprinklers and the requirement for sprinklers in residential construction, and the cost that might impose. We've heard about increasing the density in the low-density residential zoning. We've heard about the issue of short-term rentals, and whether they should be included in the zoning ordinance or separate ordinance. We also, now as a member or the liaison to the pedestrian and bike committee, we had a request from that group to be added to the planning board process, which I support. And that's in addition to things like the industrial zone and Flag Pond Road, that really should be changed from LDR to industrial, allow them access as part of these amendments. So I hope that the planning board also has time to take up those issues and address them in addition to these three that we're going to send them now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I was reading along, as Counsel Johnson read the motion, I don't believe he read the last portion of the motion, which would refer these proposed amendments to the planning board for public hearing and report pursuant to section 230-1401B of the Saco Code of Ordinances. I'd just like to, just like the clarification on that as to whether he did read that or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I did not, and the reason being is, as I've stated at a previous council meeting, these really are two separate motions and two separate items. The first matter of business before us is to approve this zoning ordinance. The amendments came out not from council but by staff, and that should have The amendments came out not from council but by staff and that should have been represented here in our agenda as a separate. Item, as I've stated before, which is why I deleted that and along the same lines of Council Berman, I was hoping. That we would also add some of the items that, um, you know, we've, we've heard spoken on to refer those to the planning board. So that, that's the reason for it.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Purdy, uh, that, that answers your question?
It does, thank you, um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure we were exactly clear on what the motion was and. Like Council Johnson, there are, and, and, and Council Berman, I, there are some other issues that I, I would like to refer back to the, uh, to the planning board as well, thank you.
Thank you, Council Archer.
Oh yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I too wanted to, to discuss some of my concerns specifically with the forced sprinkler systems in, in A D U. I, I, I consider that to possibly be a barrier to our older elderly, uh, citizens who may want to age in place. Aging in place is a, is becoming more common. And I believe that this added cost may potentially be a barrier to those individuals. Um, I also want to talk about the, I had some issues with our solar farms as that's new and upcoming. And I also did want to talk, I wasn't going to specifically mention Fenderson Farm, uh, but I was going to mention that I did think that it was. Possibly oversight, but to change an active and longstanding farm, which you're only talking, uh, quarter of a mile, it, it's not that far to the, uh. Uh, the conservation zone out there, um, I did think that that was an issue and if, if, uh. I was considering even putting forth a contract zone amendment individually. To make sure that they can keep their farm as is. So with Counselor Berman, I did have concerns related to that, and again, if you look at the zoning map, that farm is, is, is a property or two away. Again, they're a longstanding farm that has been around for many years. I remember back in the nineties, I'd go visit my uncles and, and, and some family out in Dayton. And my mom would always stop there and we'd pick up some from some farm fruit and things like, like to that nature. And for that to, to change, knowing that they're longstanding, um, I do have concerns with that.
Thank you, Council Archer, Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, um, I, I don't intend to get, you know, walled up in, in the details here. Of some of these things, but specific to the Fenderson Farm, I just, I think it needs to be clear. Again, having, having been involved with this process that. We didn't change the zone per se, we changed it what currently sits as R one D. I believe that's been in place since probably somewhere around twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, when that, coming out of that comp plan. They extended the R one D for residential housing to their parcel. All that change was it's become less residential, but very little has changed. In that sense. Solar farms are not currently allowed by right until this ordinance is passed, so. Uh, it'd be kind of difficult to, to come forward, you know, in this process. And, and try to amend the map, it's the same issue we're having with these other suggested amendments as. The Zors and the planning board has already gone through that process, they presented a map and then in the eleventh hour, we're here trying to amend. That map without having sent it back to the planning board, so. I mean, I, I will publicly state that I, I wholeheartedly support, um, you know, solar on that parcel, it's just again, when, when we were looking to do solar farms and where we would place them. At the time, it was in the conservation district. And that's all we did was take what the present day C one is and said that's where solar farms are allowed, they just happen to be right on the edge of it. So yeah, I, I don't see an issue with a subsequent amendment in the future to, to allow it on those parcels. And again, I'd be supportive of it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Director Clavette. Can you, uh, can you address some of the issues that have been brought up, uh, here today? Uh, and address maybe what the, and, and maybe, uh, uh, City Planner Hamblin can also step in and. And talk about what are the next steps for the planning board to address? Some of these issues that have been brought forward in the public hearing. Brought forward from members of the public and brought forward from the city council.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor Doyle and, and members of the city council, um. Couple of things, I, I believe that the amendment that Counselor McFail put forth. That describes reverting back or referring back, I should say, the, um, three amendments that the council heard. Back to the planning board is justified and, uh, completely within the parameters of what needs to happen. I just want to, um, re-announce to the council and to the public that the three amendments that are going back to the planning board were also. Portions of the zoning ordinance that were already, uh, concerned, uh, considered and discussed at the planning board, but the planning board chose not to have those pieces of, uh, put back in. So those three amendments came forth, um, to the council to be discussed. Um, and the council proposed and supported staff and legal counsel to actually add those three amendments. But then subsequent to that, legal, uh, advice has been that we need to separate the two, to separate the, um, zoning ordinance that's been completely approved by. The planning board, the report substantiated and approved, uh, that piece of it. As well as both public hearings, uh, supported the December second, uh, portion of the zoning ordinance, uh, site plan, the subdivision regulations and zoning map, um, to be approved. That said, anything subsequent to the three that were discussed, considered the planning board. This, uh, basically, I don't want to say dismissed, but basically stated that, no, the planning board did not support that, but then the, the city council supported that and asked staff to, to make. Um, an amendment as such, um, that the additional pieces like the solar farm, um. You know, and recreational marijuana has not come forth this evening, but that's another item, there are a lot of other items that can be considered under zoning amendments at some point. But those pieces this evening. My advice is that the zoning ordinance, uh, be approved at the December second level, that the three amendments that the council, um, actually advocated for. Pushed back to zoning or, uh, to the, um, to the planning board for review, but any other subsequent considerations. That deal with questions, whether it's solar arrays or recreational marijuana or any of these other items that those. Council directs tonight's staff to consider those amendments back to the planning board to discuss. Uh, we do have a list and I don't have that right in front of me of six to, to eight items that we are already pursuing. With the, the planning board, and so those items will, will be considered. The other thing for a point of clarification, I do want you to know and to echo what Counselor Johnston stated, is some of these zoning ordinance. Re-named, uh, zoning districts have not seriously changed, you know, because it says West Residential does, has not significantly changed what that farmer can actually do. And we have communicated with the Fendersons, um, to that effect. And, and then we will continue to work with that, and then, then as far as the Fendersons are concerned, their use is grandfathered. Anybody's use in existing districts is grandfathered, it, whether it's a home, a business, um, what have you, and so I don't want people to feel like. Just because zoning districts have been A renamed, B, um, reconstituted, for lack of a better word, with, with different, um. Dimensional standards and other, um, standards. That we're not going to say you can't do this and you haven't been able to do this and you cannot continue to do this, that's not the case. And so, um, and, and I just don't want people to feel like this new complete revision rewrite, and, and I know it looks like an amendment, but it's actually a rewrite. For modernization of the zoning, um, ordinances. I don't want people to feel like they can't continue to live life the way they have lived here in Saco. And, and that's not where we're at, so, um, I hope that addresses a few of the, um. Misinformation or some of the questions that have been asked, um, then I'd be happy to answer more, and then Bob is also on the call. And so is, um, our legal counsel, Jim Cassipikas, to be able to answer to some of the more concrete questions, we also have. Our legal staff, uh, city attorney, Tim Murphy, um, as far as process and all of that, so I hope that helps answer a few of the questions.
Thank you, Director Clavette, uh, City Planner Hamblin, would you? Care to jump in?
Sure, I would, um. I think, uh, Director Clavette, uh, was, uh. Right on with, uh, each of the issues that she just brought up. If, if the Fendersons indeed are still, uh, on the meet, uh, involved in the meeting, I'd, I'd really like to reassure them that. Uh, without question, they, uh. They have what we call in the zoning world a legally non-conforming use. Agriculture is actually allowed and allowed use in the, the existing R one D zone and, uh, in the proposed West Residential Zone. Uh, the zoning boundaries are staying the same, uh, the name of the zone is changing. Uh, but agriculture is allowed, uh, so that they can continue to raise crops out there as long as they'd like. Now, agriculture with livestock, uh, is not in allowed use in that zone, either the existing or the proposed zone, so nothing is changing there. But once again, we come back to the legally non-conforming use. Uh, the Fendersons have run that farm for far longer than I've been involved, uh, with the city of Saco, and that's been about twenty years. So the, the notion that their family has gone back generations in, uh, uh, running a farm with livestock, they can continue that. Pass that on to the grandson and he can continue to run that as well. A well-established principle in, uh, in zoning and land use, so, uh, they can take a deep breath and relax. Mayor, councilors, as you know, there are some, um. Issues that the, uh, the, the current effort simply has not, uh, addressed, um, short-term rentals for one. The potential of adult use or recreational marijuana for another. As has been the case for decades, uh, new uses pop up, uh, communities consider. Existing uses perhaps, uh, becoming less desirable over time. New uses, uh, being more desirable, so let's, uh, amend the zoning ordinance so as to encourage the one, discourage the other. It's a continuous process, so. Whether the, uh, council chooses to move forward with the current, uh, zoning ordinance review package. From the planning department's perspective, it's fine if, if they do. If these, uh, if the proposed ordinances move forward this evening. Or within this ninety-day window that has been mentioned, that's fine as well. Existing efforts, uh, to tackle the, uh, the proposed amendments that are before the council tonight. Will continue and certainly if referred to the planning board, they will, uh, occur at that level. Most likely in February. And then, uh, again, the other items that haven't been particularly the bailiwick of the, uh, Z O R. Process, the short-term rentals, the adult-use marijuana. The potential for, uh, rezonings or revisiting density on specific par- uh, parcels. Squarely, uh, on the schedule of either the planning board. Or if more appropriate, then of the, uh. Just created long-term planning committee, um, so. I can simply assure the mayor and council that, uh, uh, if it chooses to move forward this evening, uh, as the draft motion has outlined. Perfectly acceptable, and I think that's a very workable direction. And, uh, the planning department, planning board, long-term planning commission will continue to work on, uh. Other issues that, uh, as, as per usual, continue to crop up and will continue to do so.
Thank you, City Planner Hamblin. Council, discussion, comments, questions? Councilor Berman.
As I understand it, the motion we're currently considering would direct us to adopt the zoning ordinance. Without referring the three amendments to the planning board within the same motion. Leading to the possibility that we may pass the ordinance without referring those amendments. Back to the planning board, what would happen under that circumstance and, and what would happen if the zoning ordinance is not seen as conforming? With the comprehensive plan?
Director Clavette.
I just want to remind folks that you have already voted on the amendment, the motion, which actually includes reverting the, um. Three amendments back to the planning board, so your new motion is now the motion with the amendment.
Councilor Purdy.
Thank you, that was the clarification I was making before, Council Johnson's motion did not refer those amendments back to the planning board. He, he stopped the. He stopped in the, he read the suggested motion as is, uh, short of referring the amendments back to the planning board. That's, I think that's the clarification that Council Berman is looking for.
And if I may, I understood Counselor McFail's motion to be to extend the effective date from thirty days to ninety days, but not, it didn't mention. Sending these other three matters back to, to the planning board, I didn't recall that.
Thank you, thank you, Jim, Councilor Berman.
That's correct, and I'm asking about the consequences of that, right, what happens if we pass the one without the other?
Director Clavette.
So, just so that I am clear, clear on this, so the motion right now before you is to. Accept the December second version. Fourth from the planning board. And revert back the three amendments to the planning board. Yes.
Director Clavette, the, their counselor, Johnson, who read the motion stopped short of including. Subsection, the word and, and then subsection C, uh, of the suggested motion. So at this moment in time, uh, there's, uh, there's a discussion about only. Reinstating the new zoning that was sent to the council, uh, on December second. First hearing, or first reading, December fourteenth, public hearing on the fourth. And then the amendment for the ninety days has passed, so enactment would not be for ninety days, so if there was going to be. If, if. That other piece would have to be another amendment that a counselor would have to sponsor and. And go through an amendment, uh, if that piece was to be added in, but the question that Councilor Berman is asking is what is the? What is the, uh, problems of? Doing it one way or the other, uh, Councilor Berman, I think that's your question.
That's right, about if we pass, uh, the zoning ordinance as read during the first reading. Without referring those three amendments back to the planning board.
So. What I'm hearing is that if you pass the December second version without the amendments. Back to the planning board, you're basically. Passing. The December second version without any direction about going back to the planning board, not with the amendments, is that what I'm thinking you're asking?
And I'm asking, what are the consequences if that were to happen?
That's a very good question, I think I would have to defer to legal counsel on that, I mean, at this point, um, that would basically mean that the three amendments are free-floating. And, um, and the staff and legal counsel could decide what to deal with, with those three amendments. But in essence, you have basically the same outcome in the sense that you have adopted or you could approve the adoption of the. December second version. And the amendment that's forward, basically ninety-day effective enactment date. And those three amendments become. You have to direct us or guide us as to whether we go back to the planning board and deal with that, plus the solar array or any of these others. May become just one of the, the many amendments. That we could come back toward, forward with you with. All right, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question, I was completely confused, but. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts here.
Thank you, Director Clavette, Councilor Archer.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh. Just so I'm clear, the last sentence of the motion was to allow access to industrial zone parcels, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, uh, I'd like to just clean this up at this time and make a motion to amend the main motion by adding. To refer these proposed amendments to the planning board for public hearing and report pursuant to section two thirty, tac fourteen oh one B. Of the Saco Code of Ordinances, and that is to be added after industrial zone parcels.
Motion to amend by Counsel Archer to add in after industrial zone parcels, add section C to refer these proposed amendments to the planning board for public hearing and a report pursuant to Section 230 1401B of the Saco Code of Ordinances. That is the amendment to the main motion as amended. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. So discussion on the amendment. The amendment is, is to refer the proposed amendments to the planning board for public hearing and report pursuant. That is the amendment that Counsel Archer has just raised, and Counselor Purdy has seconded. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. So again, as I stated previously, the reason I took that out is because it should be a standalone item before council, at which time we could add other things like the solar array or whatever else we were thinking of sending back to the planning board. I just think that for an item as important as this, being the zoning ordinance, we probably shouldn't muddy it up for historical context and try to figure out when these changes occurred. Just keep it clean. We're approving what's been submitted so far, and next week or when thereafter, staff can bring forth these three amendments or whatever other amendments we may be agreeable to. That was my intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counsel Archer, then Counselor Gunn. Counselor Archer? Counsel Archer, are you muted?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree in most cases where motions should be separate when applicable. However, this motion, I don't feel comfortable approving the motion and then kicking back these three amendments in the sense of potentially you could be putting yourself in a position where you can't even vote to amend. This is more of a Robert's Rules-type concern of mine. This, in this case, adding to refer back is, is material to what we're trying to accomplish. Again, I'd be afraid to pass this, and then all of a sudden you can't, can't retract it. So again, I believe in this specific case, it's so material to what we're trying to pass that I believe it should be encompassed. But I do understand what Counsel Johnson is referring to, but there's always exceptions to the rules. There's always reasons why something must be packaged, and I believe in this specific case, we need to package this so that's being approved of passing and referring back, so.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be clear on my understanding of Counselor Archer's amendment here. You're just referring to the three amendments that staff had recommended be in the initial motion that Counsel Johnson left off in his motion. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
So this doesn't include any other of the potential motions or amendments that we may take up potentially at a later date?
That is correct.
Okay, and I guess my third question is, the way this is being done and packaged, as Counsel Archer says, it doesn't preclude us from getting into the weeds on some of these issues, but if I understood Director Clavett, the Fenderson issue shouldn't be an issue, or likes for that matter, Mr. Waterhouse's issue in his letter to us, though, would that be something that we precluded from addressing at some point?
Director Clavett, can you answer on the Waterhouse matter?
Sure. As in with the Waterhouse matter, as in with recreational marijuana, as in with any of these other issues, the subsequent issues, including shoreline zoning, and I don't have the document right in front of me, we have seven or eight items that were never fully vetted with the ZOR committee and the planning board committee to be discussed for further clarification, and those are, I don't want to say put off, but those are issues that had the potential inordinate amount of time. So we wanted to take the bulk of the zoning ordinance revision, get that completed, and so there were these three amendments, just so that everybody knows, are the ones that have been vetted, discussed, and actually the plan decided against them, but we brought them forth because we believe that the city council should have a decision-making authority on that. They've been decided to go back, but the remaining five, six, eight, we have about a list of 10, and I think, I mean, I literally, I mean, I, Isabel's on the, on the call here, but we would have to just dig those out, but there's like a list of seven, eight, or nine, 10 items that are, come back before the planning board for amendments, which could include everything from solar arrays, crinkles, systems, and all of these other items. Not that we're neglecting them, they just married a heck of a lot more of a conversation that we were able to devote to it. So I don't want to dismiss those, but I think that the top three that we're asking council to revert back to the planning board are items that have been vetted, discussed, thrown back and forth, and with no consistent agreement on. The remainder are items that we need to fully vet, including getting professional guidance, engineering expertise, and a lot of other research to be able to have some sort of an educated conversation about how we need to go as a city. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Most definitely. Thank you.
And Director Clavett, the reason for these amendments that are so material, as Counselor Archer described, is because they help the proposed zoning become consistent with the comprehensive plan of the community in the eyes of staff and the legal, and the legal opinions of the attorneys have worked on this zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. At the risk of making this more confusing, I do have a question, and it was partly why I left this, that last sentence out, because it seemed out of order, given that this ordinance isn't in effect. So how can you refer amendments to an ordinance not in effect? And based upon this motion, they won't be in effect for 90 days, so how can council refer amendments to an ordinance not in effect today? It's just, it doesn't seem, it seems rather confusing and out of order to me. So I guess that's a question for Mr. Katsavikas, since he's our attorney.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. I would actually ask City Solicitor Tim Murphy to opine on, or perhaps give us some guidance on this, because this is an ordinance issue related to our ordinance, which says all amendments have to go back to the planning board for a report. City Solicitor Murphy, are you with us? Thank you for joining us this evening.
You're welcome. I don't, I understand Nathan's point, Counselor Johnson's point, but I, I don't see it as an impediment. If it's enacted but has an effective date later, it's still an enacted ordinance of this city. It's just, there's a different triggering event for when we become bound by it, but I don't, I don't see that 90-day gap as a reason why you can't have an amendment that goes back to the council. That's how I would interpret that. I think it'd be helpful, Attorney Katsavikas and I have worked together many years. He's been at this a little bit longer than I have, a greater well of experience, so I'd be curious to see his viewpoint or hear his viewpoint as well, if you're open to that, Mayor, but I'm comfortable with what's been proposed.
Thank you, City Solicitor Murphy. Attorney Katsavikas, do you want to weigh in beyond Attorney Murphy?
I'd just say that I agree with that, because the idea is that it is, you would be enacting this ordinance to become effective within 90 days. It is, and so what you are sending back would be amendments to what you have adopted, and the idea here is that the amendments could catch up with what you're enacting tonight, so that everything could go into effect presumably at about the same period of time. It all makes sense. I don't, I don't think there's a legal issue with regard to that or any lack of effectiveness.
Thank you, Attorney Katsavikas. On the amendment only, any further discussion? Counselor Berman?
I just have a process question. We've referred three changes back to the planning board. Are they going to come back to us as a single motion to approve all three, or will we be voting on three separate changes?
I believe the, the planning board will submit a report. It may encompass all three in their report, but we will, we will look at those, perhaps in three different amendments, just to make it clear, and have three different votes on that.
Thank you.
Counselor Berman? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Again, specific to the amendment, without getting too detailed into all this, as I said last week, you know, I can sit here and go through both comp plans and find inconsistencies with the current zoning and the proposed zoning, and for, for these three to say that they're inconsistent, it's kind of laughable to me, particularly with the LDR change, because this is something we did discuss, and I am the one that really pointed out the fact that it wasn't consistent with the comp plan, and here we are with staff recommending that we change it, even though there's several specifics in the 2011 comp plan that specifically speaks to that LDR area, which is why I had recommended that we take it up after the next comp plan. So again, I just, I see us going round and round and round for the foreseeable future on this, but you know, you can move ahead and make these changes.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion on the amendment only, and the amendment is to add in after industrial zone parcels, the word "and," and then the letter "C," and then to refer these proposed amendments to the planning board for public hearing and a report pursuant to Section 230 1401. Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition on the amendment only. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
The motion passes 6-1. Back to the main motion as amended. Bear with me, I'm writing here at the moment. Back to the main motion as amended. Discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, just so that everyone's clear, the motion has been made, it has been amended twice to include referring the proposed staff amendments back to the planning board, and then also to delay the enactment of the zoning ordinance for a period of 90 days. Those are the two amendments that have passed, and so we're at the main motion as amended. Any further discussion before we go to a roll call vote? Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition, a roll call vote on the main motion as amended. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's well-known that I have some reservations on this revision. However, with that said, I think it would be irresponsible for those few concerns and reservations that I have to kill a two-year process with significant city resources, so I vote aye.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
I just, I guess, at this point, like to take that opportunity to say thank you to everybody that has participated in this over the last two years. Particularly over the last year, I'd say all the members, and I'm not going to name them all, you know who you are, have really, in many ways, almost become like family members to my own kids, looking at you on the screens, they recognize the voices. So again, you know, I have reservations, but as we've stated, and I've stated several times, even tonight, nothing's ever going to be perfect. We can strive for that, but we're always going to end up with conflicts, so, you know, I'm happy to, after two, really, I look at this as four years of my life, given that I was part of the last 2018 update, so I'm happy to see this finally pass, so yes.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. The motion passes 7-0 as amended. Thank you, everybody. Again, I echo Counselor Johnson's thank you to all the hard work that was put in by the many boards and committees and residents, and just all the hard work of staff and all the hard work of just everyone involved in the culmination of this, you know, two-and-a-half year project. So thank you, everybody. With that, we are on to Item C of the action items, and that is the Eastview Parkway Uses Park North Contract Zone. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Solicitor Tim Murphy.
All set?
All set.
Thank you. Elliot Chamberlain, manager of Park North Development LLC, appeared before the council on August 8, 2019, seeking to amend the contract zone with the addition of two items to the list of allowed uses, quote, "offices of contractors and tradesmen and contractors," unquote. The council voted to approve the amendment with the condition that four issues first be addressed. Number one, a new traffic movement permit be issued by Main Department of Transportation. Two, all trail systems within the development be completed to the city's satisfaction. Three, all open space land intended for conveyance to the city be conveyed. And four, the sidewalk reference in the 2011 conditional approval along Cascade Road be complete. Mr. Chamberlain has reported on progress to date and asked to discuss the amendment's status with the council. Staff recommendation is the planning department regularly accepts letters of credit as guarantees that approved projects be completed and is agreeable to the proposed LOC as a guarantee that the Cascade Road sidewalk will be completed per the approved plans. Be it ordered that the city council find that Park North Development LLC has adequately responded to the conditions imposed by the council on August 16, 2019, and that a letter of credit guaranteeing completion of the Cascade Road sidewalk is acceptable pending completion of said sidewalk no later than June 30, 2021, and that the amendment to the contract zone by and between Park North Development LLC and Preston Properties LLC in the city of Saco to add the use of offices of contractors and tradesmen as permitted use in parcel two, and to add the use of contractors as a conditional use in parcel two is hereby approved.
Second? Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn, second by Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Johnson?
Well, first, just, I'm looking for a little clarity. This is under new business, correct? Don't we not normally make motions under new business?
This is under, we are action item, item C.
Okay. Well, I guess first, I'd like to thank the members of staff. I know they've been working, you know, on this for some time, and not just in compliance for the CZA, but that traffic movement permit, I was very pleased with reading that, and I do know that several members of staff were involved with that. I mean, I feel like for as long as I've been on council, many of these things have been outstanding issues. Specifically, I look at this sidewalk that really, at this point, now dates back to 2016, when I first made a motion, and yet we are still without a sidewalk. And I could be agreeable to this letter of credit, but it hasn't been presented to us, so what are we really agreeing upon? There's no input from Department of Public Works on it, so I wouldn't really feel right accepting that tonight without having that for us. I mean, I can name several examples throughout the last 20 or so years, maybe longer, where we've had letter of credits that never actually performed to the level they were stated at the time. And then the other issue I have is that really, we can, we could, you know, council could make this motion, accept this letter of credit, but you still have the outstanding issue of the fact that the contract zone- Issue of the fact that the contract zone itself needs amendment. Because in that contract zone, by motion back in twenty sixteen. Read that phase one of the trail system shall be completed by November first, twenty seventeen, so that's still in this contract zone. And I would argue and maintain that that means the developer's out of compliance with the contract zone. And again, I I would be acceptable, sorry, credit, I'm ready to move past this. Ideally, I'd like to know when we're gonna have an actual sidewalk. I mean, that dates back to twenty eleven. So I guess I'd like input from staff. On on that matter is, do we have a letter of credit? Is that something that is gonna be provided to council before we vote? And again, I maybe it's for for Mr. Murphy, if he's still out there as far as updating the contract zone. But clearly, it's it reads the way it does presently, and that I would think would need to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston, City Planner Hamblin, can you maybe address some of the issues raised by Counselor Johnston? I can. Counselor Johnston, I think, has accurately identified each issue that he has ticked off here. The contract zone document itself is is certainly amendable and agreed. It dates back. At least to twenty eleven, and are there subsections there in that bear amendment? In all likelihood, absolutely. So certainly, if the council cares to direct the planning department to get that ball rolling, we would be happy to. No, there is no letter of credit that has been submitted to speak to this sidewalk. I guess the flip side of that coin is. The overall subdivision. Does have, I'm gonna say, three to four existing letters of credit. Guaranteeing various phases of the project. Including actually, and this was required by MDOT, including one that guarantees that the traffic movement permit will be. Acted upon in a timely manner. If the city council would prefer to see a. Letter of credit prepared for its review prior to moving forward on this, that can certainly be arranged. I do want to just bring to the council's attention in in the letter that Mr. Chamberlain has submitted. That precipitated the item being on this evening's agenda. I heard from a an area businessman. And he's one of the two, I think, that Mr. Chamberlain references in his letter. This gentleman does not operate a business in Saco currently, he would like to. He'd like to put up a oh, ten thousand square foot building on East Street Parkway on one of the lots that Mr. Chamberlain has available. For sale. He'd like to divide that building into four, invite three other small companies to move in along with his and. Either move or create thirty jobs on that piece of property in that building. And I understand there's a second businessman who would like to do the same thing, put up a new building on East Street Parkway. So upon hearing from this gentleman, it it's amazing how a sense of urgency being communicated by a member of the public. Can get you to sit up straight and. Determine quickly, how can we move forward on this and make this happen? So consequently, Elliot drafted his letter, and we got this in front of the council. My apologies for not getting some input from the Public Works Department on this. That would boil down to, I suppose, either support for or not support for this. Sidewalk and or support for this letter of credit to guarantee the. Construction of the sidewalk in a timely manner. I can assure the council that city engineer Joe LaVera has been part of discussions with myself and Mr. Chamberlain. We're both aware that Mr. Chamberlain has this sidewalk under design by Sebago Technics. Come spring, this sidewalk can be started. Once the weather improves. And as we've suggested in the draft motion, I believe. That yes, should the the council agree with finding this letter of credit acceptable to guarantee the construction of that sidewalk. The sidewalk gets built one way or the other, no later than June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. So quite honestly, in the the greater scheme of things of this. You know, project that is tens of millions of dollars in the ground to date and still to come. A letter of credit guaranteeing this construction of a sidewalk between now and the end of June. Can be administered fairly easily by the planning department. I think it lays out the expectations very clearly for the developer. And simply put, it allows a couple of area businesses to put up new buildings in. The business park that Mr. Chamberlain is selling lots in. Staff would love to see this move forward. Thank you, City Planner Hamblin. Counselor Archer, then Counselor Johnston, Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is what my going on my fourth year, starting off my fourth year, and I've dealt with this developer a few times. My question comes down to is is is, again, it's my historical knowledge and and not other counselors, but we also have counselors have dealt with this. Developer longer than I have. How often does? I'm trying to word this fair fairly. Out of respect to the developer as well. It is my understanding in this case that we have presented several dates of completion. And my concern is, I don't know the percentage of how often this developer actually gets the project done by that date of completion. So when I see said sidewalk no later than June thirtieth, I my own personal feelings at this moment is is that that date's kind of irrelevant. Because I'm just basing it off of historical knowledge. Is it possible, again, we do letter of credits, I understand what they are, but is it possible? And even negotiating the June thirtieth, that we put a penalty clause into into what we decide into this decision? Again, I've seen many projects that do not come to fruition, or we continue spending staff hours. Requesting future contact and 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 spending more resources than needed to get something that was already promised. That is my concern. I'm not concerned with with. Going forward, per se, but I'm not comfortable that the June thirtieth, twenty twenty one date will actually happen. That that's where I'm concerned, and definitely like to have a little bit more conversation possibly with other counselors or staff. Because maybe I'm wrong, but I I just remember a lot of projects having gotten done on time.
Thank you, Counselor Archer, Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, I just, I want to be clear, like, I'm not trying to impede any business from coming to the city of Saco. This motion and amendment that was done back in twenty nineteen. Was a motion and amendment to try to get the previous motion upheld, because for whatever reason, it wasn't. You know, at thinking back to that period of time, I guess I should have been. More on top of staff, I guess, to enforce this, I I thought it would have. Worked itself out, but I mean, this this sidewalk, the the addition to the contract zone. Was at a request for an amendment to the contract zone at that point. The date says November first, twenty seventeen, that was in October of twenty sixteen that I made that amendment. I still have no sidewalk, and I I'm not asking someone to build a sidewalk right now, but I I've heard enough, I've asked enough about this sidewalk. I'm just looking for the letter of credit, and once it's before me, I have no problem signing off on it, but I want to, I I'm making sure that we protect the city's interests. I mean, I I don't think it's that difficult, it's present us with the letter of credit. If DPW says that's inadequate amount, I don't know how much a sidewalk costs. But if they tell me that's inadequate amount, and that if it's if it's not done by June thirtieth, twenty twenty one, they will be doing it, then I'm a hundred percent okay with that. But I don't think that we should be doing this before having that letter of credit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston, Counselor Archer.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to table just for one week, I don't think we need longer than that.
Second. Counselor Johnston has made a motion to table. And Counselor. Counselor Johnston has seconded that motion to table. On the motion to table, which would be just till the twenty fifth. The Monday, the twenty fifth. On the motion to table, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes, and if I may. If I may add, Mr. Mayor, when it comes back to us, obviously, it'd be nice to have a letter of credit in the packet. But also any. Review by legal on whether or not the contract zone needs to be amended.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston, I think staff has heard your your comments. With that, that brings us to. Item ten, new business, and that is item A, a discussion regarding the Pine Tree Curling Club, this page seven ninety two of your packet.
Mr. Mayor, we have our, oh, she is here, I was gonna say Jessa Parton, our economic development specialist, is our resident expert on this topic, so.
Economic Development Specialist Berna, thank you for joining us this evening, welcome. Please, when you're ready, enlighten us with the Pine Tree Curling Club.
Thank you, Counselor Doyle. On December tenth, David Florrig, the owner of Pine Tree Curling Club, came to the Economic Development Commission with a request to. Build a curling club, a nonprofit use in the Saco Industrial Park. As a nonprofit use, this use does need, in the in the covenances for the business park, this use. Because it is a nonprofit, would require approval by the city council. In your packet, there is a letter from David Florrig, and I believe he is also here this evening, if you have additional questions for him. We are here tonight, I'm here to answer any questions, as he is or anyone else on the team, about this use. And to get consensus from the council about whether or not it would like to take a vote on this item at a future meeting. Oh, and I should also add that the Economic Development Commission was very supportive of this. Allowing this use in the industrial park, and they voted unanimously in support of it and made that recommendation to council.
Thank you, Jessa. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a question more, I guess, for legal. Any concerns about using a nonprofit in an industrial park area? We've had some issues in the last couple of years related to that, and I just want to make sure that's vetted. The the use, it doesn't bother me, it's just I do not want to see this in a. Legal setting.
Mayor Doyle, may I jump in?
Absolutely.
Sure, I understand that in the past, there has been legal issues with nonprofit uses in businesses, parks. However, my understanding is that 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 was partially, if not fully, because of not following the process. As we are doing tonight. So in making sure that this is happening before the use is enacted. We are, we are following the legal process, and as we drafted this motion, it was all and brought it before the EDC and the council tonight, it was done in consultation with. Mr. Nicky Murphy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer, Counselor Berman.
Thanks, the use sounds fun, I would like to try curling, but that's not my question. My question, I just want to clarify something on the top of the second page of their letter. And that's although it's a nonprofit use, it looks like the intent is to still pay property taxes on the property. Through the original owner, is that correct?
That is my understanding as well, yes, they're planning to lease the facility, so the property owner would remain the same and would pay taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Berman, any other questions? Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, personally, I'm intrigued, it's something I've always wanted to try, that being aside, I can, I can see there being some. Some problems with the. The the covenants. Couple of things I've, or one thing in particular I was thinking of is is. I was reading the the covenants and the. So one, one thing in in favor of this would be that it would be, it could be a an economic. Or a tourist draw to Saco on the off season, which would bring in. Which would bring in money to the business in the off season. There again, does that offset the other possible problems? I don't know, but something worth thinking about, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Well, I will agree that, you know, the use sounds fun, intriguing. I I think that, you know, you still have that question. Of what was the intent of the covenants, and regardless of whether or not. Property owner is is going to continue to pay the taxes. We open ourselves up, the more we, you know, death by a thousand cuts, I guess. You you start allowing these uses, and we say, well, this one fits because of X, Y, and Z, and then the next one comes forward, and. That's what we're setting us ourselves up for, and so I have reservations about that, because I've been a strong supporter of those covenants, the way they were written. It was supposed to be exceptional circumstances that we were, you know, moving away from them. And I I don't really view this as a as an exceptional circumstance, I I think it'd be a welcome addition to the city. But there are other locations that are zoned appropriately. I'd also just like to point out that under the current zoning, this is not an allowed use. Ninety days from now, when the new zoning ordinance goes into effect, it 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 will. But that also is a larger question, I think we should have, and it's it's something I had reservations about with with the. With taking three industrial zones and merging them into one during the zoning ordinance revision. Because we've now opened up all of our industrial land to recreational uses. Which I I don't think was the intent when our previous elected officials. Move forward with creating these zones. You know, maybe one here and there, but it, again, I guess that's a bit off topic, I just, this kind of came to light. And I'm looking at this earlier, and I was thinking, oh, well, that didn't take long to get a a sport related use into what's largely been the I one. And has traditionally been just industrial, as with the I two, which allows this use, has kind of had that that other component. So again, whatever council decides, it's really, they can't move forward until the new zoning ordinance is in effect anyway. But I do think we should take. More consideration into not looking at the use. But looking at the fact that it's a a nonprofit and what that entails going forward as other nonprofits. Come forward and say, well, what about me? We already have had several circumstances where that has happened. You know, I won't list them off, but it it's almost an unfair process at this point, so I'm looking at it, because we have had several that have. Inquired about potentially locating an industrial park and being told, no, just flat out, no, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston, Counselor Gunn.
Yes, I was just curious if we have any idea, just in the ballpark, what type of rent would the the club be looking at? For use of the building, one year, two year, that sort of thing.
Jessa, do you have an an answer for Counselor Gunn's question of, is there leased long term lease, or is it, you know, short term? Jessa, do you have an, an answer for Counselor Gunn's question of, is there leased long-term lease, or is it, you know, short-term, one year, or?
Unfortunately, Counselor Doyle, I do not know the answer to that question. I can find out before the next meeting, or we could see if, oh, it looks like David Florrig is also in the audience and has his hand raised, so perhaps.
A letter, page 2, say, seven to 10 years, I think I read.
Thank you, Counselor Archer.
It's a perhaps. It's not solid.
Hence my follow-up question. I just wanted to see if there, if they had more of a solid idea of what they were looking for. Thank you.
Council, is, is anyone object to hearing from David Florrig, the, the, the proponent here that's brought forward this proposal to us? Hearing, no objection. Let me see. David Florrig?
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please, please tell us a little bit more about this interesting proposal you've brought forward, and maybe you can, if you've been paying attention, you can maybe answer some of the questions that have been posed.
Yeah, the, um, thank you for, for considering our proposed use. In answer to the most recent question, we are hoping to find a long-term home, and we have mentioned to the owner, we're looking at something like a seven-to-10-year lease, possibly renewable. So, you know, it, it could vary anywhere from seven to 20 years. I mean, we, we want to be part of the community and have a more or less permanent home.
Thank you, David. And with this curling club, can you, can you answer a little bit more about will the curling club be bringing in events and tournaments and bringing in different things with other curling clubs? I'm not in the curling world, so forgive me. I'm, I'm asking your expertise here. But is, is that something that happens? Is, is that something that would be a draw for our community?
Yes. Um, as I said in my letter to the commission, the only other curling facility in Maine is in Belfast, which is obviously a long distance away. We're down here closer to the, the population center for Maine. So with Portland and the coastal area being such a draw, we are certainly hopeful that lots and lots of out-of-towners will be coming in for what are called Bonshfields, which are curling tournaments. And they can come as, from as far away as Canada or Pennsylvania, New York, and all of New England. And they're generally, you know, weekend events, so the people are staying in hotels and going out to restaurants and breweries and those kind of things. So yes, we do anticipate this being part of the, you know, the tourist scene in the off-season. We would probably run from roughly late September till the middle of April.
And what happens in between the, the timeframe of April and September?
Yep. So we have our regular leagues, you know, we'll have men's leagues, women's leagues, mixed leagues, industrial leagues, adaptive leagues, youth leagues, all of those kind of things for people who want to make that kind of commitment. But the facility, one of our missions is to grow and teach the sport. So on a roughly weekly or bi-weekly basis, we would be having Learn to Curls, where anyone can come in and we'll spend a couple hours teaching them how to play the game, how to throw the stones, what the rules are. So we'll be engaging the general public in that way, and then the facility is also open for corporate events, team-building things, outings, where, you know, your company can, can come in and bring 30 or 40 people, and we'll again teach them how to curl and, and let them play a little bit of a game. So it's really a combination of inviting the public in to learn how to play the sport and having leagues for people who want to be sort of more dedicated, regular curlers.
Thank you for that, David. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to Mr. Florrig. I see in your letter that, let me, let me back up for a second, is that when we talk about industrial, we, we typically, when the city, or when I, when I look at the industrial park usages, a lot of cases, it has to deal with how many employees are going to be hired with that. I, I do see that you're a member-based club, and I've actually, I'm, I'm members of various member-based clubs, so I definitely understand the model. With growth, do you see yourself hiring part-timers, full-timers, managers of the Brink, Brink, I'm sorry, I don't know the name. I know it's on ice. Things of that nature. Do you see with growth, actually, the actual hiring of individuals? Whether or not they're members, I don't know if your charter allows you to pay members, or if they'd be specific employees?
Yeah. We would be allowed to hire employees. I think, quite honestly, that that would probably be several years down the road until we got large enough that we were actually running building, you know, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., because we had so many events. At that point, we're going to need receptionists and people to take care of the ice and those sort of things. But in the meantime, while we're smaller and in a growth phase, it's probably going to continue to be volunteers.
Okay. With your expertise, I, I've driven by the curling place in, in Belfast, so I know exactly where it is. I kind of, I can kind of remember the size. You're the expert, so I'm going to ask you the question. And I know you're different than Belfast. I do get that. How many employees does Belfast have? If we were to kind of use them as a model, what do they look like?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah, I, I just know that they, they own that building. I think it's been there for 50 years or so as, as a curling club, if I'm not mistaken, but I, I don't know the answer to that specific question.
Okay, thank you for your truthfulness.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. So it's been mentioned that real estate taxes would still be paid through triple-net lease. Is there any intent to, to pay the personal property taxes? I know that with other nonprofits, we have in our industrial park, that's kind of been the aim, is, is maintaining that element of taxes also.
I, I'm not clear. What other taxes are you referring to? I'm sorry.
Personal property.
Jessa or Denise, was there any discussion about that at the EDC, and perhaps any discussion about that in response to Counselor Johnston's question about the taxing issue?
Well, I, I believe that the property taxes will be paid for by the owner of the property, which is Dock and Door, that is looking to build in their new area, the area that they've had at the extension of Willie Road. So if that answers your question, I mean, they specifically, the curling club will not pay for it, but obviously, their lease payments would reflect their ability to pay into the lease that would include the, the property taxes. But if I may, Mayor Doyle, answer to a couple of other questions or, or kind of insinuations that have been brought forth. If I could add a couple of comments now, I will, but if, if not, I can wait for a later point.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so one of the things that, that I think that Saco, as with any other southern Maine community, has really not spent a whole lot of focus on is on sports tourism. There's a huge, huge element of bringing economic development to anywhere in the state of Maine. When I was Assistant City Manager in, in Auburn, I mean, their big focus there, and still now, is on sports tourism and, and, you know, working on their facilities and trying to make sure that sports tourism is front and center. And, and that's a huge piece of what brings people to an area, whether it's to locate or to come in and to eat, and to dine, and to, to stay overnight. And so those pieces are a huge, huge part of economic development, and I know it doesn't meet the bill of like, this is not a business, it's not manufacturing, we're not employing a ton of people, but we are throwing in a, an element that is not anywhere else in the state of Maine. You know, it's, it's one thing that needs to be considered, and that is, you know, the curling club, other than in, in Down East Maine, is nowhere else in the state of Maine. And it's something we want to envision being part of, of Saco. Right now, it tends to be the condition of being a tenant slash lessee in a business park, but does this have the propensity to eventually establish a club here in this area that all of a sudden, five years, six years, seven years down the road, now becomes a permanent structure, a permanent business, a per, a, a permanent sports tourism venue that is not available anywhere else in Maine, other than in Down East Maine. So when, when you take this into consideration about coming into the park, it, it's more about its opportunity and less about what can it give us now? You know, can it give us 15 employees? Can it give us this? Can it give us that? I mean, that's always, that's always a question. But, you know, I totally respect the decision you have before you and the tenants of the, of the covenants. And, and I think when the EDC had this consideration before them, it had all to do with what is the opportunity that this curling club could provide here for Saco? Can we be second on the map to Belfast, or wherever the other, the other area is? Or, or can we be front and center? So I think, I think that needs to be really, really considered as well. And again, keep in mind, this is a lease. It's not like they're asking to buy the building and pay absolutely zippo property taxes. That's a whole different story at another point in time. But, but the property owner is, is willing and ready to accommodate this new use and will be building a brand-new facility off his Willie Road property. So it's not like we're losing a huge tax providing, you know, property tax as well as business equipment tax asset is not leaving Saco. It's moving to another area. So I just need you to have that into consideration when you're making this decision this evening.
Thank you, Director Clavett. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, thank you for coming on, and as everybody else has stated, this sounds like an amazing, fun opportunity for us. Denise, for you, he does have written on here that they are looking to obtain a fraternal alcohol lease. In the current zoning or the proposed, are there any concerns or issues in that zone regarding that?
I believe we have already reviewed all of that, and I, I think that everything is all set, and, and David, if you could interject here, but we have reviewed all of that, and I believe that everybody has responded that, that it's an acceptable use. And Jessa, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that?
Yes, I agree. That is my understanding as well. And, and that would have to go through the sort of the normal liquor process, but there's nothing in the zoning or covenants prohibitive of it in this area.
Okay. And having it classified, because, you know, building a clubhouse style, and again, because it's a member-based versus an open-door recreational facility, just making sure that there weren't differences with that or anything that might.
Yeah, and that's a great question. Great.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, it's, it's just, I'm trying to understand, again, we have to look for the best fit of Saco, and, and I haven't written you off, so I'll start off with that. I'm, I'm still fact-finding. Is the vision, I don't even know the size of your club, but is this, are you visioning to be larger or about the same size of Belfast? We have more people down here, so it could be a larger club, if you know what I mean.
Yep, we, um, are looking to lease and retrofit a building roughly the size of Belfast. It would have three lanes for curling and a warm room and a clubhouse. We envision being able to accommodate up to 240 or 250 members eventually. So quite a few, in addition to the folks who would be coming on a one-off kind of.
Would you, if you were to consider your, your vision size to Belfast, what would that look like? The same or larger?
It would probably be about the same. Curling clubs and their membership are generally driven by how many sheets of ice they have.
Okay.
Some have two, some have three, four, five, six. We would have three like Belfast, so that would be a good comparable.
Okay, thank you. More of a, I don't want to call it a fun fact to my fellow counselors, but a, a quick 990 search, that's nonprofits, profit-loss statements provided to the IRS, is the reason why I was looking for the, what size they were looking at for is even Belfast brought in about 150,000 a year in revenue. So if, if Mr. Florrig's vision, and, and he's representing a, a membership group, so I know he's, he's not the only person, but if those members vision about the same size, they, they are looking at about 150,000 in total revenue. Belfast also has net assets of a, of a third of a million dollars, so this could be considered a, a, a good investment, because in, in most cases, I'm looking at their expenses. It goes to occupancy, rent, utilities, and maintenance, which helps out the city, and most of their other expenses are probably going to the local economy. So I just wanted to throw that out there, now that I have a better understanding of what the vision is. Thank you, Mr. Florrig.
Yes, and if I could say, our, our budgeting is roughly the same in terms of what we anticipate for revenue. We were looking along the lines of about 175, 180,000 perhaps first year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston, and Counselor Berman. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. Just to restate my prior question, I asked about personal property tax, meaning equipment tax, the tax that all other businesses pay on their equipment. I'm asking if that had been discussed as far as being assessed, since they are a nonprofit. I'd be much more open to them being in the industrial park if they were paying not just property taxes, but also the personal property taxes.
Director Clavett, David, do either of you want to answer that question, or Jessa, if, if you know the answer to that?
I'll start quickly, and then I'll refer to David. Clearly, that has not been a topic of conversation, primarily because it's not a business that would carry a whole lot of, of personal property tax and equipment. And, and basically, that's, unless David can address it any other way, it's, you know, other than if you do open up a bar, you have some nominal personal property that you can actually claim, but it's not a driver. Counselor Johnston, as, you know, as you would ask about any other business, it's not, it's not a driver. But one thing I did need to refer is that the the person, the property that is owned by the current business, Dock and Door, would be completely relocating and basically almost one and a half, if not doubling their personal property, to be able to expand their business. And so that would, that would be an asset, but that's clearly not the driving force between leasing this property. And David, if you have anything else to add, I, I believe I'm correct in that act assessment.
Yes, and, and obviously, we haven't discussed this in detail. In terms of personal property that we would own and have at the site, it would be fairly minimal. I mean, there is some. fairly minimal. I mean, there is some equipment involved for making the ice and maintaining the ice and the curling stones themselves are rather expensive. You know, we may have some ancillary equipment, tables, chairs, desks, computers, that kind of thing, but in terms of a lot of personal property there, we're not going to have that. If that addresses the concern.
Thank you, David. Counselor Berman.
I, I agree with the enthusiasm that some people have shared. I also share some of Counselor Johnston's earlier concerns about this being a non-conforming use and allowing this one and death by a thousand cuts. And it would help me if we had some clear differentiators between this and other nonprofit uses and why this one might be okay. But others wouldn't. We're going to have a fair process and provide guidance to others. And other than the fact that the use sounds exciting and like potential tourist draw, but that's still not very clear to me.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Any further discussion? Okay, is there any objection to this coming back to the council for some additional information? Okay, I'm not hearing any objection here, so. Staff, you have heard the concerns of the city council and this may want to come back as another, perhaps down the road with some of those questions being answered, so the council can consider some of those issues.
Okay.
Okay.
Here it is, that you want questions answered and come back for an action item at some other future meeting.
That's, that's, I heard no objection to that idea.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Thank you for joining us, David. And is that, is that your customary hello and goodbye, good curling, as was in your letter? So if that is the case, good curling to you, sir. With that, that takes us to item 11 of the agenda, which is the administrative updates, the administrator Canrath.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A brief update on the Ecology School. We have worked with Drew Dubs from the Ecology School as well as our city solicitor to craft a memorandum of agreement to present to council for consideration. This MOA will seek to solve some of the issues raised during our previous discussion of the waiver that you remember, and this will likely be on our next meeting agenda. Saco Parks and Rec is preparing to hold our next senior meals event on February 12th at the community center. The meal will be provided by Delia and Company here in Saco. There are additional future dates that we are looking at in April. In March and April, possibly around St. Patrick's Day and the Easter holiday, so those are currently being finalized and will be announced in the near future. Also an update from Parks and Rec is the phosphor ice rink will be ready for use by this weekend, January 16th. I'd like to just throw out one more reminder to counselors about any charter amendments. If you do have any proposals for consideration, please send those into media at your earliest convenience. Lastly, our upcoming collective bargaining agreement negotiations, the city, as you may know, has five labor union contracts due on June 30th of this year. I've begun the process of reaching out to the appropriate parties to talk about beginning those discussions and what the process will look like. Our new HR consultant, Betsy Alton, will be assisting with that. She already has a relationship with some of these folks. And we'll be deciding who will be representing the city on our side of the table with the respective units. So I'll keep you updated fully as we go in this process and as we move forward in bringing these new contracts back to you for consideration and approval. So I have happy second questions, thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions regarding the city administrator update?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to throw in one more item that recently just happened tonight also. The EDC considered a proposal from Wastewater allocating up to $300,000 from TIF funds to support Phase Two construction of the Route One sewer extension. This phase will bring the service, obviously from Cascade Road to the southern entrance of Aqua Bogans parcel. So the commissioner reviewed this proposal and unanimously voted on the following motion to allocate up to $300,000 or maximum funding available from the Park North TIF district to support a prorated portion of the Phase Two construction of the Route One sewer extension. So that happened just tonight. But we'll be bringing this back to council also for further review and consideration. So just a note that that happened about 4:30 this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. And that is due to overruns, correct? That is due to overruns in the costs of the project to bring down the remainder of that that line or that extension, correct?
Yes, there was a piece that is above and beyond what was left and available bond funding that needed to be filled.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Canrath? I see no questions. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment? Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a very interesting week and an upcoming week in our nation. And what I'm just asking again is I just want us all, us Seconians, us Mayners, and us United States citizens, I just ask that we all just reflect on what civility means. To me, I don't care about difference of opinions. In the end, I just care that in the end civility exists. I'm not going to ask for opinions or anything like that. I just think that we all just need to sit back and reflect and and just look at what civility means to us and what it means to be a citizen of the city, a citizen of the state, or a citizen of the United States, and I'll even include citizens of Earth. Civility is important and I just wanted to put that out there that I've been reflecting on what that means lately. And I just wanted to put that out to my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Any further council discussion and comment? See no further council discussion and comment. That moves us to the next item on the agenda, which is item 13, and that is a motion to move into executive session. Is there a motion? Yes. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, be ordered the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056A, City Administrator Review.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Counselor Berman? Discussion? Or roll call vote on entering into executive session? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Party?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
A motion passes 7-0 to enter into executive session at 8:55 PM. Folks, if you migrate over to the Zoom platform invite that you got from City Administrator Canrath, that is where we will have it. However, we will take a five-minute recess, a five-minute recess in between there. So please be back by 8:00, 8:55, 8:56. Thank you.
Is there a motion to exit executive session?
Mr. Mayor, be it ordered to City Council exit executive session pursuant to M.R.S.A. Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 4056A, City Administrator Review.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Councilor Minthorne, second by Councilor Purdy, to exit executive session. Any discussion on the matter? A roll call vote on exiting executive session. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to exit executive session at ten oh eight P.M. With that, item fourteen, is there a report from executive sessions?
Mr. Mayor, there is no report.
Councilor Minthorne, no report from executive session. At this moment in time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilor Minthorne, is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Councilor McPhail, a discussion on adjournment? Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Minthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes at ten oh eight P.M. Thank you everybody, thank you for all your hard work tonight, your thoughtful deliberation, and your comments here. I wish you all the best, be well, and stay safe.
Take care.